The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of Umbold Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 6:00 PM. The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The Umbold ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. Our colors tonight are presented by the Kingwood Park High School Air Force JROTC. I would ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Post colors. Right, ace. Four, arch.
We will now survey the colors. Thank you. You may be seated.
Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely. Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to have you here. As you all know, sports is something that brings us all together. Go Astros! In tonight's inspiring moment, we will see how Integrated Athletics in Umbold ISD brings together student athletes and students with disabilities to provide an opportunity for all to shine on the field of competition.
Integrated Athletics is a program that creates an opportunity for individuals with disabilities to participate on a competitive sports team within Umbold ISD. It was established in 2013 and has grown to serve over 600 student athletes in the Umbold Independent School District. Umbold ISD Integrated Athletics high school athletes compete in a district-wide basketball tournament, field day, track meet, and soccer tournament. Middle school students compete in a district-wide field day and track meet. Elementary school students participate in an annual district-wide golf tournament. Being a part of a competitive sports team offers a lot of opportunities, like getting to wear a school uniform, getting to be a part of a sports team, getting to leave school and load a bus to go to a district-wide tournament. But in turn, being a part of a sports team offers the ability to learn skills that many of our students with disabilities struggle with.
To me, it's really big because he needs to learn to work with other kids. As being a former coach, it's not so much the game, it's what you learn from the game that you can apply to life. And for him to be able to work with kids, trust other kids, and just be involved, that's huge. Some of these students that have disabilities, like my son, kind of isolate. So it's nice for him to be a part of something.
I used to coach JV and varsity sports before I started to do this. And so when I stopped coaching JV and varsity sports, this kind of fulfilled that role that I was already missing. But this has been so much more special because you can see the growth and light bulbs turn on and them learn how to work as a team, because it's something that they haven't done their whole life versus the varsity team that they grow up from age six playing. And so it's second nature to them. So these kids are actually having to learn the skills and become a team.
I love being on the team so much because my friends liked me very much because I really want to show them how smart and awesome I am.
After the basketball tournament, we get trophies. And it just makes me proud, makes my mom proud. Like, yeah, I just get to hang out with other kids, you know?
What they do is amazing. It's outstanding. We love to see those athletes be able to be the spotlight, and that's like their World Series, so to speak, their Super Bowl. It's important for us because it gives us a chance for these young adults to kind of have a servant attitude and help others, give assistance to those that may need some assistance from time to time. But it helps them with their leadership and life skills, just being able to help somebody else.
Integrated Athletics is very important to us. Give us the opportunity to go hang out with the kids and just have a great time with them. It's really fun for us, too.
It was like a thing that I honestly didn't know about at first, but after being in it, I absolutely love it. And I think that these kids bring me a lot of joy. And just like the peer tutors, I had a lot of fun with them, too. So it's a very good time.
I love Integrated Athletics because it's a great way for the kids to interact through fun activities and just moving their body and just having fun.
My favorite part is that I exercise, you know, and I stay healthy.
I think for me, I knew the program was going to benefit our students in the district with disabilities, and it has, and it's amazing for them. But for me, my eyes were open to see how far-reaching this program is and how many people it touches every year.
The smiles that we get on our faces is just as big as the smiles on the Integrated Athletes. So it's a cool thing to watch, but I definitely see that they feel extremely fortunate for what they've been blessed with to do out here, and it kind of puts some things into perspective for them.
I think it's good that we're involved just because it gives us a different aspect of looking on our sports, because all of us are athletes that have played our sports for a very long time. So it's kind of big that we get to see that these kids are really growing from what we do. That's something that we love.
We've seen these kids grow. We've seen them mature. We've seen them all turn into young adults over the last four years.
I think every year I walk away from the year feeling like we succeeded in offering all of these opportunities to students who, in the past, might have been forgotten or might not have had those opportunities.
This is something that I've never experienced before as a parent. Seeing my oldest son and my second child, my middle child, both of them have autism, and they've never really been engaged in anything like that, just to see them both getting awarded for something that they've accomplished, it was just a little bit overwhelming. Words can't really describe how I was feeling. When I think back to that day, it just brings a smile on my face, man. Just seeing them do that and they turn to me like, Daddy, I did it. That is something that... That's something that I really enjoy seeing them do.
All these kids, they all have daily challenges. They all have disabilities, but for that one day, they're athletes.
They shine. That's their day to shine.
I think that's it. There we go. We were given time for everybody to put those in their calendar at the end. Integrated Athletics, as you saw, has more than 600 participants this school year. Tonight, we have some of the stars of the Inspiring Moment video with us, so we would like to recognize all of them. Welcome, Umbold ISD Integrated Athletics Lead, Robin Pollan. Also with us tonight are Adam and Will Bosserman, Dylan Eaton, Navy Omenson, DJ Wilson, and Christopher Young. Tomorrow, the high school Integrated Athletes will be having their field day at the Insperity Adaptive Sports Complex. Good luck, athletes. We hope you have a wonderful time, and thank you for being here tonight so we can celebrate all that you're doing together with your peers and your parents in our program. Thank you so much for being here. Ooh, that was a good one, Jonathan. Congratulations on... Oh, all right. Congratulations. We even had new additions to the Public Communications Department that is pitching in on that one, so thank you very much. Okay, tonight is special as we celebrate our Elementary Teachers of the Year. I'd like to ask Ms. Lucy Schultz, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, and Ms. Kristy Erb, Director of Elementary Education, to come to the podium and introduce our Elementary Teachers of the Year.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fagan, Board of Trustees. So the teachers being recognized tonight will be remembered for a lifetime by their students. So it is an honor for me to be able to recognize each of you. So first, from Atascocita Springs Elementary is Ms. Melissa Swan. Come on up. Yeah, we're going to have another plaque. We're going to take a big photo at the end as well. From Autumn Creek Elementary, Chanel Poole. Our first Teacher of the Year for our newest campus. From Bear Branch Elementary, Ann Lynch. From Centennial Elementary, Stacy Coughlin. From Deerwood Elementary, Jamie Phelps. From Eagle Springs Elementary, Melanie Pacetti. From Elm Grove Elementary, Abigail Klein. And Ms. Klein is also being honored as a district finalist. From Fall Creek Elementary, Adrian Lagan. From Green Tree Elementary, Jasmine Craddock. And from Groves Elementary, Andrea Awinski. And she is unable to be here with us tonight, but we'll make sure she gets her reward. From Hidden Hollow Elementary, Christopher Guardo. From Umbold Elementary, Daisy Landa Rose Reynolds. From Jackfields Elementary, Tamara Ojeda Bonilla. From Lakeland Elementary, Patricia Perez. From Lakeshore Elementary, Rochelle Hall. Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to Kristy to finish this.
From Maple Brook Elementary, Deanna Galusha. From North Belt Elementary, Maria Osonori. From Oak Forest Elementary, Andrea Harises. She is unable to attend tonight, but we will ensure she receives her plaque. Oaks Elementary, Kelly Banda. Park Lakes Elementary, Monica Schultz. She is also unable to attend tonight, but we will make sure she gets her award as well. Pine Forest, Adrian Despo. River Pines, Tiffany Perkins. And Ms. Perkins is also being honored as a district finalist. Shadow Forest, Jennifer Sanchez. Ridge Creek Elementary, Olivia Eastland. Summerwood Elementary, Sarah Shivers. Timbers Elementary, Stacy Ward. Ms. Ward is also being honored as a district finalist. Whispering Pines Elementary, Angela Smith. Willow Creek Elementary, Lindsay Renan. Wedlin Hills Elementary, Linda Azalini. And Foster Elementary, Jill Honeycutt. Ms. Honeycutt is also being honored as a district finalist and our Elementary and District Teacher of the Year. Thank you all.
Let me talk to you back there, because that's a long ways. I'm going to arrange them for a minute. These people don't mind. So y'all can come up here, feel free. Once we get them set, y'all are allowed to take all the pictures you want, and then we'll take a different picture, too. But don't be afraid to come up while we arrange them and get a better picture.
Here, your camera.
Now, if you're on the front, scoot all the way forward.
It's impossible.
I sure will. Did you get one?
There we go.
I know, I had to go to the third row.
I'm sorry, guys. One, two, and stop it. Okay, one, two, three. Y'all, it's so little. I'm assuming you're all smiling and not blinking. I'm going to take a few more. One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one, last chance, not blinking. One, two, gotcha. Thank you.
Let's give another round of applause for our extraordinary 22, 23 Elementary Teachers of the Year. At this time, many of them need to get home to their families and prepare for another school day tomorrow. See y'all then?
Oh, this moves. While they are transitioning out, I just wanted to say for everybody who's watching and who is here, our Teachers of the Year are selected by their peers. It's a big honor to be selected by the people that see you teach day in and day out. And we had our Secondary Teachers' Last Meeting, Elementary Teachers here, and so we're very, very proud of the work that they do and so very happy to have them in Umbold ISD. So thank you to all of them who are excited to now go home. We understand. Next, we're going to move on to superstaffers. As I just mentioned, our staff members go above and beyond. Ms. Kristy Tarkington, Assistant Director for the Office of Community Engagement, is going to come to the podium and introduce our superstaffers.
Thank you. Umbold ISD employees go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping Umbold ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at the school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to an award sponsor. This month's superstaffer awards is sponsored by Whataburger. They were unable to attend tonight's meeting, so Trey Kramer, Assistant Superintendent of High Schools... I know. Will join me in passing out the awards. Thank you. Being honored as the Elementary Superstaffer is Shatoya Carbo Andrews, third grade teacher... Third grade teacher at Atascocita Springs Elementary School. Her principal, Cheryl Fennell, is here with us tonight, and she's actually going to join us here for the presentation. When asked why Shatoya was honored to be the recipient this year, we were told it is no secret that Ms. Andrews is here to get the job done and get the job done right. She always has done an excellent job with her instruction, assessments, as well as her dedication to her students. She has high expectations for her kids to meet them. While she's always done a great job with her classroom culture, this year particularly has truly cultivated a classroom centered around mutual respect, both from teacher to student as well as student to student. Her classroom is a place where children feel both accepted as well as challenged, which may sound simple but is exceedingly rare. She has struck that balance of high expectations, a delicate hand, and tough love that many teachers work their whole careers to find. They work and take charge of learning without even realizing it. Her students love her and love being in her class. It is these reasons and the countless more that Ms. Reynolds is deserving, or Ms. Andrews, I am so sorry, is deserving of being our Atascocita Springs Elementary November Superstaffer. Congratulations. Thank you. Being honored as our secondary superstaffer is Senior Officer Louis Costignano. School Resource Officer for Atascocita High School. While he's making his way up here, we want to share with you a short video on why Kingwood High School has selected Officer Costignano as their superstaffer. We're going to ask Dr. Nazra to join him up front. Senior Officer Costignano is the best School Resource Officer we've ever worked with. He builds relationships with his staff, students, and parents. Officer Costignano is the best School Resource Officer we've ever worked with. Officer Costignano is a hard worker and truly lives out his purpose of serving the community. He spends many nights, many late nights, assuring that his work is complete and the best quality. Then the next morning, he is back on campus with a smile on his face and ready for another day. The three words that best describe Officer Costignano are hardworking, trustworthy, and dedicated. Congratulations. Being honored as our support superstaffer is Caesar Chavez. Mr. Chavez, would you like to join me up front? Mr. Chavez is in the Maintenance On Demand Maintenance Department. His supervisor, Daniel Taylor, is here as well. He's joining us up front. Caesar Chavez stated, started the Custodial Department as a custodian at Atascocita High School. His determination and hard work promoted him to painter. Caesar has set goals for himself to do more. He has a can-do attitude and gets the job done. Caesar is pleasant and always has a smile on his face. He has spoken, he speaks very little English, or spoke very little English when he was hired. He has adapted and his vocabulary increases daily. Caesar has been promoted to pressure washer and recently took the position as Maintenance On Demand. Caesar Chavez is being recognized for demonstrating excellence in work performance and his positive contribution in support of UMBL ISD's mission. Congratulations.
All right. What a great night already. Integrated Athletics Elementary Teachers of the Year, amazing superstaffers. I mean, I think Rusty, we should be able to see that video one more time. One more time, in case you missed it. It's amazing. As a former high school teacher, I just want to say, well done. I mean, those of us that have tried to keep that age group entertained. So, congratulations to all of our superstaffers. Really amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than one minute. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the UMBL ISD website. Let's see. One second. Okay, here we go. We have two people that have signed up for public comment. The first is Risa McCann.
Good evening. My name is Risa McCann. I recently sent most of you all an email concerning the attempt to ban books from UMBL ISD's school libraries. Thank you to those of you who took time to respond. Tonight, I stand in support of you all, the district administration, school librarians, and teachers. They provide a variety of carefully curated books and instructional materials which enrich and support the curriculum and that are vital to a well-rounded education. As school board members, I encourage you to defend every person's fundamental, constitutionally guaranteed, protected access to reading materials. I believe parents have a right to direct their own students, their own child's reading materials, without dictating what books other people's children are allowed to read. So therefore, I stand against the banning of books, but I stand in support of UMBL ISD.
Thank you, Risa. Thank you very much. Next, we have Leslie Ann Wilson.
Madam President Dixon, members of the Board, I'm Leslie Ann Wilson. I am the owner and operator of Yoga Six Kingwood, which is a yoga studio that recently opened on Kingwood Drive about a mile east of Kingwood High School. I wanted to let you know that we are committed as partners in education to the district, and we have worked with your Community Engagement Department to establish a 30% discount for your teachers and staff, as well as a 40% discount for your high school students, and a 25% discount for UMBL ISD parents on all of our classes and membership offerings. We believe wholeheartedly in giving back to the community we call home. Monthly, we hold classes for a cause where funds are raised to benefit a select organization or effort, and we'd love to help the district or its schools with any of their fundraising projects if we can. Additionally, we'd love to hold classes for your staff or students as a way to introduce the countless benefits of yoga for anyone who might be interested. I have left our contact information with you. I implore you to reach out for any of these aforementioned reasons, and we look forward to growing our relationship with you, and thank you for the opportunity to introduce yourselves.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have comments by individual board members. Is there anyone in particular who would like to go first? Mr. Sitten.
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick. From the athletic front, we have three schools in the playoffs starting this week. And volleyball-wise, Summer Creek just lost in the third round. They got, that's the furthest they've been in school history. So, a lot of great things happening there. Atascocita High School retired Kenyon Green's jersey. He was the first-round pick by the Houston Texans, and now is a rookie is starting for the Texans. So, a lot of good things happening there. But, you know, those are the things that catch the headlines. There were two things that happened this past week that really, really caught me. Kingwood Park, their drill team, their dance team, had a foreign exchange student from Italy that was in one of the dance classes. And the host family reached out to Cindy Vaughn and said, you know, our host student saw you guys dance and just thought that was the most amazing thing. And before she leaves to go back home to Italy, she would love to be able to participate in a halftime show or dance or something with the girls in the way that you did. So, through some planning in the final home game of the year, the Silver Stars presented her with a uniform, boots, and a hat, and crafted a dance so that she could dance with them at halftime before she leaves to go back to Italy. So, that was on Thursday. And then on Friday, we started hearing a little whisper about something that might happen on Saturday. And I'll tell you what, when you talk about, I mean, it fits right in with our inspiring moments. UMBL High School. Marcus Schultz, the head coach, had a manager that has been with the program, physically could not participate. There were a lot of health issues. But, he comes into the locker room with so much energy, excitement, enthusiasm, and all the kids really kind of rallied around him. And so, the ask was, could he play, suit up and play one play? And parents said it was okay. Troy Kite Athletic Director said it was okay. And so, then the Beaumont United folks, very classy, said it was okay. So, timeout was called with about three seconds on the clock. The kid runs out on the field. Everybody's just going crazy. And they snapped the football, gave it to him, and he scored a touchdown on the final play of the season for the UMBL Wildcats. And I tell you what, just the excitement from that kid, and then the subsequent video that was posted on the UMBL ISD, all the social media pages, you need to go and look at that. It is absolutely incredible. And just the aura of the stadium when we left. And, you know, it's more than wins and losses. However, for the first time in years, every football team was 500 or better, three in the playoffs. But, this is what we do. I think Marcus said it best. It's more than football. It's about young men, young women, and creating something special. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes, do you have anything?
Yeah, just real quick. I think I was at Westlake Middle School last week, and I know that they're getting ready to start some mentorship programs. And I think the one thing I just want to hone in on, and I won't have too much to say, but I really like the watchdog groups that are going on, where you have these dads really getting involved in a lot of these elementary and midschools. You know, moms are absolutely and always will be unequivocally important. I just really like when I see dads getting involved and just really being active and being a presence on these campuses. So, I know that there's quite a few. I don't want to call out any one of them individually, but I know that there's several in the UMBL ISD district where they're really active and involved. And I just want to say thank you, you know, to all those dads giving up their time to do that.
And lastly, you know, again, just, I had several kids in the neighborhood say that they want to thank the administration for letting them have an excused absence to go to the parade. I don't know if all of them went to the parade that took off as an excuse to absence, but nonetheless, they wanted to say thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kurt Choffer.
Thank you. I just want to, the first video we watched, the Integrated Athletics, I don't know, Robin, Robin wasn't here, was she? She was here. Well, this is for her. And everyone that's involved in it. They've created a sports environment for our kids that deserve and need it most. And I think we all can agree on that. Superstaffers, congratulations. Lucy and Christie, the elementary teachers, congratulations to our finest elementary teachers. And I'll be back for the foundation update. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
Thank you, Madam President. So, one of the things this month that was just awesome was the Charles Street Stadium dedication. It was just wonderful. There were alumni from the 50s, 60s, 70s, all the way up to current alum, Mr. Sitten included, my husband Jason, who used to have Field Day at Charles Street when he was in elementary school. So, that was just a wonderful event, and the stadium is gorgeous. If you have an opportunity, I would highly encourage you to go check it out. Last night, I had the joy of attending Les Mis at Kingwood High School. And all I can say is, wow, those kids, the collaborative effort that it took to put that, I mean, unbelievably great production together was amazing. So, I just wanted to congratulate those kiddos, and that's it, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, real quick, just wanted to, one of our Secondary Teachers of the Year finalists that was here last month, she, Ms. Welch from Kingwood High School, you saw on the website, it's really great. She received the American Chemical Society Great Eastern Excellence in High School Chemistry Teaching Award. So, just a shout out to her for such a great accomplishment. And Mr. Sitten mentioned some of the athletics going on, but the cross-country teams, I mean, we had one, two, three, four, five teams that were in the States finals last week and last past weekend. And the Kingwood Girls team won the, won third place, took the bronze, and led by Senior Carly Aaron, who finished 15th overall out of the entire field, and four of her teammates finished in the top 30. That's great. Congratulations to them and all of our students who got to qualify to run in the States. That was a great thing. And also, I just want to, just a little commercial here. You're ready to start doing your Christmas shopping, make sure you get over to the Spirit Shop over in the admin building, which sells a lot of the products made by our Mosaic students. And this is one I had ordered, and it's really a nice t-shirt. They have many, many things you can choose from. But go in there, they find, they're all set with all their Christmas stock. So, go in there and shop till you drop, because it's a great place to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Morrison?
Well, it's just a great time to celebrate, let's face it. I ditto everything. My, I know I talked to Mr. Sitten about Coach Schultz. He never ceases to surprise me. Wonderful man, building a wonderful family. And kudos to the teachers of the year. I still have one out there at one of the schools. So, but really, a wonderful time for all our kids and our staff. It just goes to show you how great this district is.
Thank you. And basically, I'm just going to ditto what everyone else said. I mean, really, this is why we do what we do. The Integrated Athletics program was truly amazing for me. That's, I don't know, very emotional. I felt tears around me and within myself as well. But just to say it again, this is why we do what we do. Thank you very much. Our next item is comments by administration. Dr. Fagan?
Thank you so much. It's been a great night. You all have seen so many wonderful aspects of UMBL ISD. And I just want to say thank you to all the supervisors who take the time to do those superstaffers, because we're all busy, and that's one of those things. It's just one more thing, right? But tonight, you see how important that really is to celebrate the uniqueness of some of our employees, because it cross-pollinates all around the district. I mean, so many people get to see that, and it inspires them to a higher level of performance or thinking about their job differently than they did before. And that's one of the things that we aspire to do. I've said this before, education can be kind of isolating sometimes, and you don't have the opportunity as a teacher to see a lot of other teachers do what they do that you're trying to do. But when you see these teachers of the year, one of the things we charge them with is to get on Twitter and to share some of the coolest stuff you ever do so that other kindergarten teachers can follow. And they can say, oh, I could do that, or I've never thought of that. Or they even start to, you know, DM or email each other and share that information. And so, you know, the world, there are some things about social media that maybe aren't my favorite, but that's one of the things I really love about it, is it allows people across time and space to connect and share ideas and passions and do things for students and not feel so alone in the classroom. So, we charge our teachers of the year to do that, and also our administrators and leaders, department leaders, to really look for the best in their folks and to share it with all of the districts. So, I really appreciate the time people took tonight and every day to do that. That's a really important part of our culture at UMBL ISD. Not only are we always thinking about what more could we do or what are some things that could be better, but we're celebrating the people that are coming up with the ideas and doing those things also. So, thank you to Public Communications. They take a lot of time to create videos that everybody can see and that live forevermore on our website, and then share that back with others. And I also want to say thanks to Henry Phipps and Melissa Lee and Ty Hops. They're working on a little tiny project for me, and they're doing a great job. And basically, to just keep it short, you know, we all have seen post-pandemic that the mental health needs of students is far greater than we've ever seen before. And a lot of times, people say, well, that's not us, that's not us, you know? But this is a team that says, well, maybe it should be us, and what could we do? And how could it look different? And how can we support? And how can we support parents? And how can we support kids? And we want every child to be successful and to have that winning moment. And sometimes there are things in the way that we can help and we want to. So I want to thank them in advance for the speedy work they're doing to bring some new ideas to the state of Texas and to Umbel ISD. We're excited for sharing that out and the legislative session where we hope there is strong support for it. So thank you to them.
Thank you. We will now have updates from our board associations and committees. First committee is the advocacy committee. Mrs. Parker.
Thank you, Mrs. Lamont Dixon. We met this month with the Justice of the Peace Precinct Four, Place Two, Judge Larissa Corduba. We had a wonderful chat and worked on some advocacy issues.
Thank you. Audit Committee, Mrs. Morrison.
I think I might make one. We met last week. I'm going to defer since we'll be reviewing single audit tonight.
Thank you very much. Building and planning, Mr. Sitten.
Nothing, nothing new to report since last month.
Okay, thank you very much. Board Superintendent Evaluation Committee, nothing to report. Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo.
Yes, thank you. We met last week and just a couple of things, just quickly. We looked at and we'll get into, we have the audit tonight review, but we looked at the year end parts of that in terms of the financial aspects. And, you know, obviously it shows, at least in our opinion, the district to be on a solid financial footing. We continue to maintain the 25% fund balance to cover operating expenses. So we have that in reserve and that's what we've targeted over the years. And it's good to see that we're able to continue to do that. Also, we'll be putting into place some of the new cash investment protocols that the board approved back in August to allow the finance group to invest at some higher rates and still maintaining safety. But that should really bring us some significant interest income over this next year, particularly given the high rate environment we're in today. I mean, it could be in the multimillion dollar range, which obviously what we save there can go to other things. What we earn there can go to other operating expenses that we might not have anticipated or running a little higher. And then with our health plan, it's just good to see that we're over participation this year is up 35% versus the prior year. So to me, that's a good indication that people, you know, do like, do like the plan, that they continue to want to be in it. And there's also been a significant increase in the year-to-date use in the Memorial Herman Network, which provides discounts over the Cigna. So that, again, results in savings to the plan and more money that can be spent to cover the plan costs. And that's all I have for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Education Foundation, Mr. Kirchhofer.
Well, there was 2 million people, I think, at the parade yesterday. And the foundation golf tournament, we had 224 players. So kudos to Danny Contreras and Mike Feld and the whole golf committee. One, a big thank you to our presenting sponsor, PBK, and all of our sponsors who made this event a great success for educators. The foundation looks forward to utilizing the funds raised for their innovative education grant program. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. And Mr. Holmes, Kingwood Super Neighborhood Council.
Yes, no new updates, Madam President, from last month.
Okay, thank you very much. So action items from closed session. Item 4A, personnel recommendations. Mr. Kirchhofer, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations with addendum as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Item 4B, student expulsion. Mr. Kirchhofer, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the administration's recommendation of student expulsion as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Item 4C, proposed termination of probationary contract. Mr. Kirchhofer, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the probationary contract of Darby Brady for good cause as determined by the board and authorize the superintendent to take all actions and provide all appropriate notices for the same.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Moving to item 5, our consent agenda. 5A, approval of minutes for the special board meeting held on Thursday, October 13th, 2022. 2022. Consent. Item 5B, approval of minutes for the special board meeting held on Saturday, October 15th, 2022. Consent. Item 5C, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. Consent. Item 5D, budgetary transfers amendments and resolution for commitment of fund balance. Consent. Item 5E, approval of goods, professional services and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Consent. Item 5F, tax refunds. Consent. Item 5G, waiver of penalty and interest. Consent. Item 5H, board authorization of inter-local agreements. Consent. Item 5I, approval of RFP number 2021-007R, educational and curriculum subscriptions, internet and web-based access and software. Consent. Item 5J, approval of RFP number 2022101, miscellaneous instructional material vendors. Consent. Item 5K, approval of RFP number 2023-14, real estate agent land consulting services. Consent. Item 5L, approval of RFP number 2023-102, services, repairs, maintenance, installation, district-wide. Consent. Item 5M, approval of RFP number 2023-103, school safety products and services. Consent. Item 5N, deductive change orders. Consent. Item 5O, targeted improvement plan for Whispering Pines Elementary. Consent. Item 5P, approval of new course offerings in middle school and high schools for 2023, 2024. Consent. Item 5Q, board policy COA and EF. Consent. Mr. Kirchhofer, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve consent agenda items 5A through 5Q.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Item 6A, annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2022, single audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2022, and awards for the year ended June 30th, 2021, with consideration of the independent auditor's report included in the annual comprehensive financial report. Mr. Kirchhofer, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the independent auditor's report by Whitley Penn, LOPE, included in the annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, for the year ended June 30th, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I believe, do we have a presentation? Yes. Come on. Thank you.
Oh, there we go. Excuse me. We'll just do next slide then. Okay. Well, good evening, President Lamont Dixon, members of the board and Dr. Fagan. Thank you for having me here today to present the results of the fiscal year '22 financial statements as well as the single audit. Thank you. I'd like to start with the responsibility of the different individuals and departments as well as those charged with governance. Management, of course, is responsible for the internal controls and preparation of these financial statements. And before we go any further, kudos to Mr. Billy Beatty, Laura Hamm, and Jennifer Nance for their hard work in keeping their records clean. It's not every day that we work with districts that is on top of, they know their, they know the GASB standards that have come out, how to apply them. Their records are clean, very responsive. So it makes our lives easier as auditors to be able to work with clients such as Umbel ISD. The Board of Trustees is responsible to make sure that management meets its responsibilities. The Audit Committee, like we met, oversees this entire process. And we were able to get into the details at the Audit Committee last week. And then, of course, our main goal is to issue an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statement. As you know, our purpose of the opinion is to tell the users of the financial statements that they can rely on these figures presented within. And then any, such as the Texas Education Agency, rating agencies as well, and then those members of the public as well that have interest in these matters. The reliability of our audit report indicates just that, but it's not an assessment of economic well-being. So we're not giving you a grade as whether you're healthy or not. We're telling you whatever figures are presented here can be relied on. And that's the opinion that everyone wants. And of course, we're trying to obtain reasonable assurance and not absolute assurance because that would require 100% testing of your transactions. And then, of course, we're indicating that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. The process has five major steps. In the spring, we started with internal controls. We tested those key controls, not just over your financial reporting, but also over your federal programs. We met with various departments throughout the district, not just with those in the finance areas. After interim was concluded in the summer, we came back in late August, early September, and performed our substantive testing where we corroborated, confirmed the information and made sure that reconciliations were in place, all in an effort to issue an opinion. So every entity can receive one of three opinions and every entity wants to have an unmodified or clean opinion. So it's my, it's my pleasure to report that you have earned an unmodified or clean opinion. And I say earned because it truly is that. You have received an unmodified opinion for many years. And so it's easy to say, oh, we always get one of those. But it takes a lot of work on your management team to get to this place. And you'll see here in a bit that with the influx of ESER funds and all of the moving parts after COVID, it's a new complexity that many school districts are having to deal with. Because you do spend over $750,000 in federal funds, we're required to apply government auditing standards on top of our generally accepted auditing standards. I mentioned earlier that when we looked at internal controls, not only are we looking at federal programs, but also over financial reporting and also on state compliance, Public Funds Investment Act compliance, procurement compliance, and even special allotments that the Texas Education Agency has required districts to comply with. So we didn't know any instances of non-compliance or any internal control issues, material weaknesses, nor significant deficiencies. You spent $86.9 million in your federal awards, the Child Nutrition Cluster, ESER 1, 2, and 3, and the COVID-19 School Health and Support Grant, which was a new grant, were all tested as major. We rotate the larger programs that we test, ESER 1, 2, and 3. And 2 and 3 in the future years will be front and center because the Office of Management and Budget has indicated that those federal programs are considered of higher risk for any entity across the United States. So we're required to test them. We'll rotate in your oldie but goodies, your Title I, IDEA B, and Child Nutrition. And this year, Child Nutrition was up in the rotation. Again, you're receiving an unmodified opinion over those three federal programs with no internal controls or compliance findings to report. Any questions before we dive into the numbers? Okay. When we look at your financial statements, there's two sets of financial statements. The first one's the government-wide financial statements. Those look very similar to those of a corporation. It reports all of the assets and liabilities of the entity, both capital assets and then long-term liabilities such as bonds payable. And if you compare that to, say, your general fund, you don't see those items in those fund financial statements. So when we look at the net position or the net worth of Umbel ISD, that totaled $125.3 million. The significant assets of the district were cash and investments at $482.8 million. And then capital assets, as shown on the table, were a little under $1 billion. When we move into the bonds, we'll see that the long-term liabilities were significant at $1.2 billion, but your bonds did increase by $58.3 million. And I didn't mention, but your capital assets also increased. And that's what you want to see. As you're issuing bonds, you want to offset that with capital assets as well. Your net pension liability decreased by $69.1 million. And as we've seen in previous years, it's been increasing. But in the 2021 measurement year, so TRS's valuation of this liability is always one year behind. So this liability that's reported in Umbel ISD's 22 financial statements was measured as of August 31st, 2021. In that measurement period, the investment earnings were very favorable and that was able to reduce the net pension liability. In, for the measurement period ending August 31st, 2022, it's not going to be the same because we saw from September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2022, that investment earnings were not that great. And so we'll see this liability increase as well. The net OPEB liability decreased by $5.9 million. And that was due to various factors, changes in assumptions, and then a change in your proportionate share. And I just want to remind the board that these two last liabilities do not represent a cash liability. It's simply your proportionate share of the liabilities reported at the state level. And the premise is that if TRS were to fail, this is Umbel ISD's proportionate share. TRS is very well-funded, very unlikely that that would happen, but that's all that that entails. And this, the standards that promulgate the required reporting of these liabilities was really set up for municipalities and other governments that had their own pension liabilities. And there was nobody else responsible for them except those governments. And it was reported nowhere and they were not well-funded. And that was occurring across the United States and even here in Houston. But again, you participate in TRS and the likelihood of that occurring is not very likely. If we dig into your general fund revenues, so now we're moving into a different basis of accounting where it's a current resources measurement focus. So everything that, it's almost cash basis, but we still have some accruals related to state aid, property taxes, et cetera. So general fund revenues totaled $482.6 million, with the bulk of the revenues at 49% made up of the state aid at $238.7 million. Your property tax revenue made up 38%, which was $183.6 million. You also collect taxes from the tax increment reinvestment zone and that totaled $9.1 million. And I like to put it close to property taxes. You'll also see on the expenditure side that there's also a payment of those taxes remitted back to the city of Umbel as well. The TRS on behalf totaled $24.6 million. That revenue indicates, or shows, or tells the readers of the financial statements that TRS has contributed $24.6 million on behalf of the district for all of its employees. There is a corresponding expenditure of that same amount in the expenditures. And that's required by the standards. It's a zero effect to fund balance, but we're required to reflect it as such. You also have the School Health and Related Services revenues at $5.3 million. And then other federal revenues of $12.5 million. That includes indirect costs, especially related to ESER funds, which are significant compared to other federal programs. Your general fund expenditures totaled $455.7 million, with 65% of those expenditures going to instruction and related services, or $295.7 million. going to instruction and related services or $295.7 million. The second and third highest pieces of the pie are plant maintenance and operations and instructional and school leadership at $38.8 and $33.4 million, respectively. I also like to point out in these presentations that general administration is only at 2%. The Texas Education Agency calculates an administrative ratio, and they're looking, they include a little bit more in there, but they're looking for 8% or less. So you're well below that 8% on the general administration percentages. If we also look at the cost out of the $455.7 million, payroll costs made up $396.3 million or $72.7 million. So that's where the bulk of your expenditures are going, which is the norm for school districts. When we look at your budget to actual, just for the general fund, you'll see that your revenues exceeded the final budgeted amounts by $25.2 million. And then you came under budget on the expenditure side by $27.2 million. You did transfer out $14.2 million of the general fund, and overall, your fund balance increased by $12.8 million. Your fund balance as of June 30th, '22 totaled $225.8 million, with the components being non-spendable, $9.7 million. That's prepaid inventory as well, and they're non-spendable because they're not convertible to cash. Then you have your assigned fund balance at $102.1 million. That's for various projects and initiatives set aside by the management team, and Dr. Fagan has also reviewed that, the Audit Committee also reviewed that last week as well. The beauty of the assigned fund balance, if it's ever needed, it can be placed back into operations or put back in the unassigned fund balance if it's ever needed. So unassigned fund balance, that which is available for appropriations, totaled $113.9 million. And this is what your assigned/unassigned components have looked like for the last five years. And so you'll see that you're trending in the right direction each year. The general fund unassigned and unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditure should be at least 25% as was mentioned earlier by Board Member Scarfo in the earlier part of the board meeting. If we combine those two categories of fund balance, those totaled 47.4%. That's indicating that if all revenues were to cease, then your fund balance would last almost 180 days in fund balance. So where you want to be is at the 90 days, which is the 25%, but you're well above that requirement. The last budget-to-actual comparison is for the Child Nutrition and National School Breakfast and Lunch Program and the Debt Service Fund. You do adopt a budget on an annual basis, and the results were positive as well. Your revenues exceeded the budgeted amounts by $15.2 million, and your expenditures did come under budget by $5.4 million. Your fund balance increased by $9.5 million with an ending fund balance of $15.7 million. While we stress that the general fund should have at least three months or 90 days of reserves compared to expenditures, the Child Nutrition Fund is quite the opposite. You cannot have more than nine months. Because of that, the school district has filed a spending plan, and that has been approved by the Texas Department of Agriculture. And that just tells TDA, this is how we're going to reinvest into the child nutrition program. And that's all that they want, reinvest it in the program. And the district has submitted their plan to do just that. On the Debt Service Fund, you've levied property taxes to pay down your principal and interest on your bonds payable, and your revenues exceeded the budget by $1.7 million, and your expenditures came under budget by $1.2 million. Again, the bulk of those expenditures are going to be your principal and interest along with some bond issuance fees or just issuance fees or costs that you have to pay on an annual basis. Your fund balance did increase by $3.2 million, and you have a fund balance of $73.2 million. It's very different for an 831-year school district or a school district with an 831-year end where their fund balance is lower. But as a June 30th year-end, you have to turn around and make a very large interest payment. Some June 30s have to make principal payments, but here at Umbul, it's only interest, and that totaled $18.4 million. And as you're well aware, you don't begin to collect the newly levied property taxes until December, January of '22, '23. And so sufficient reserves are needed to pay down those debt service requirements. Any questions for me?
Okay. Thank you very much, Selena. We appreciate it. We do have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion from the board? Yes, Mr. Scarfo?
Thanks, Madam President. I just wanted to say that, and Ms. Morrison, I'm not stealing your thunder here, just about the, just to note that we've gotten the ASBO Award and the GFPA Award. Those are two national organizations that award financial excellence commendations. And this is, now again, this is a year ago, so for this year's current performance that was just reported on, we'll get those next year. Pretty much, you can bet the ranch we'll get them. But the one we just received through the 2021 school year was the 36th year in a row, consecutive in one case and 36 years for another. And the one time in 1996, I wasn't here, Mr. Beatty wasn't here, so I have no idea why we didn't get it that one year. I mean, you may know some history, but anyway, but still, 36 years and running. I mean, it's just phenomenal performance over a long period of time. And I don't know if, I know all you guys do, but I don't know if everybody in the community realizes the level of achievement that the district shows year in and year out in terms of its fiduciary responsibilities towards the taxpayers, to the community at large. It's not something, and the auditor, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. As she, as Selena, as she mentioned, yeah, it becomes like, yeah, old hat, but it's not because every year you have to earn it. And now, under Mr. Beatty's guidance and everything we're doing, it's just great to see that it continues. And Dr. Fagan, hats off to you because I know you drive, you really drive the train in making sure that these things don't get overlooked, and it's just a great, great, great job for everybody involved. And then there's a lot of folks that are responsible for these kind of results. So thank you all, as a taxpayer, as a board member, as a community member. Thank you for watching out for us.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Next is our information items. Item 7A, Intruder Detection Audit Report. Mr. Perkins will share the findings from the audit.
The Texas School Safety Center conducted an audit detection, intruder detection audit pursuant to updated legal requirements. Five schools were reviewed. One finding was identified across all campuses reviewed. All corrective actions have been completed at this time. Further detail has been provided to the board in executive session for the purposes of safety and security.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Okay, our last item, 7B, Financial Services Reports is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Mr. Scarfo?
I'm sorry, I don't want to belay us, but she's in the audience tonight, and I'm afraid she may not come next month. I just wanted hats off, Ms. Hempel, for all your great leadership over the years. And I'm so sad because, and I speak as a board member, a taxpayer, and all the above, to that I know you're going to be retiring soon. And you're off such a great start this year with collections. I mean, you're at like twice the rate of last year at this time, this time last year. And you guys had almost 99% for 2020, and that's just phenomenal. But thank you so much. You will be sorely missed on many levels. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Texas.
Thank you very much. Moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? Mr. Sitten?
Madam President, with the retirement of Ms. Hempel, one of the things that we've talked about for many, many years, what I would like to do is have a discussion in the future, whether it's the next board meeting or the following board meeting regarding tax collections. Is it something that we need to look at outsourcing? Is it something that we want to maintain in-house like we have been doing? We just have not had that discussion in quite some time. And we do look at all the other things, all the other vendors that we use. And in a case like this, I'm not saying that we need to outsource, but I do think it's worth a conversation now that we've got some changes in that department.
Mr. Sitten, thank you. I know every board president does it differently. I like to poll the board to see if the board wants it to be an agenda item, so I will do that now. So I have Mr. Sitten. Mr. Holmes, would you like to see whether or not we outsource our tax collections, like get more information at a future board meeting?
Yeah, I would. I would like to get some more information on if it's something we do need to explore or not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Parker? Mrs. Morrison? Okay, that would be, it's not a vote, but it looks like the majority of the board would like it to be a future board item. So we will add that to our next month's meeting so we can have the discussion and more information on that item. Thank you very much. Any other items, topics for future board business? Okay, the time is now, one second. 8:21 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.